Hello, I'm Lorette Lee. I'm the President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, I want to thank you for joining us for our Forum Onslow. The Governmental Affairs Committee works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education. And we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to our entire community. I want to thank our media sponsor, The Daily News, the City of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities, and the City of Jacksonville Media Services for broadcasting this very important forum. I want to thank the candidates for the Jacksonville City Council for joining us. Our system only works if quality individuals choose to give their time to serve the residents of Jacksonville. Our corporate sponsor for this event is Duke Energy. At this time, I would like to call up Millie Chalk, Duke Energy's District Manager for Government and Community Relations. Millie?
Thank you, Lorette. Hello, my name is Millie Chalk, and on behalf of Duke Energy, we'd like to welcome you to Forum Onslow. Duke Energy is proud to partner with the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce in sponsoring this forum focused on candidates running for Jacksonville City Council. And in this turbulent and uncertain world that we live in, we recognize that voting's a privilege, and being an informed voter is our responsibility. So I look forward to the informational session as our candidates outline their priorities for the City of Jacksonville. Duke Energy has a proud tradition of leadership and engagement in our communities, and is proud to sponsor Forum Onslow. Onto our candidates.
Good day, candidates. My name is Elliot Potter, and I've done this a couple of times before, and some of you have, and some of you haven't. So we're going to go over the rules a little bit and let you know how we're going to handle this. I do want to say that, you know, I talked, I was talking with some of the candidates earlier who was guys who were gathered around. I woke up today in East Tennessee and drove all the way across the state and got to enjoy the beauty of our state of North Carolina, which is immense. And then I landed here in Onslow County, my home, and in Jacksonville, where today we get to celebrate the importance and the, to me, very undervalued importance of local politics and local government. So this is a big day for us. I know that there has been a lot of news lately that hasn't been the brightest, but this is a bright moment in our local democracy to me. And I am so appreciative of all of you for showing up and participating. Again, we hope to make this an enjoyable evening, but we do have to follow a few rules. And so what we have tried to do in this forum is the questions came from members of the chamber, members of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, some that I sort of took some ideas and maybe made questions out of, and then we also had some contributions for the public. We will continue that tonight. If anybody in the audience has a question or issue, a topic that they would like to present, they are welcome to do so by simply writing it down and raising their hand, and one of the chamber people here, one of the folks that are working here will be by to pick that up. If we can, we'll try to work those into the questions tonight. Some of those may have already been covered by topics that we have planned, so, but we'll go forward with that. Here's the actual format for the program. We will start off with, you know, we hope to get to at least seven. If we can do more questions, we will, but they will all be, we've done away with the round robin, so everybody gets a shot at every question. We will try to keep the questioning separated so that we will ask the question and then allow all the at-large candidates to answer, and then we will ask a question, yeah, the same question, but it'll be presented to the Ward One candidates. And then Mr. Bittner for Ward Two, you will get your shot at the questions as well. So same questions, but we will try to separate it a bit by race, district, and ward so that you will have an opportunity to, people who are watching will have an opportunity to associate who you might be running against. You have one minute for those questions. Everything is pretty easy, except for you also have rebuttal cards. I believe you have, do you have your rebuttal cards up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're going to have, you're going to have two opportunities during the evening to use those. When you do that is up to you. It would have to be done, what you can do is listen to answers, and at that point you can raise your rebuttal card if you would like to contribute something else. You'll have 30 seconds to do so if you would like to do that. It's important, though, that you, you know, and we will call on you in the order, approximate order, that we see you raise your card. So that's how that works. Your rebuttal opportunity will come at the end of all the panels' answers. So at that point, we would go to rebuttal. Whoever may have a rebuttal would then get a chance. It can, or it can, you know, I'm saying rebuttal, but it can be just a chance to add to what you already have said, and maybe you didn't think a minute was long enough, but you'll get 30 more seconds for that. You will have an opportunity at the end of the night to give a summation. That will also be one minute. I would ask that you not use, we're not going to allow rebuttal cards, the extension of time for that. Summations will be one minute. So I think I've covered everything. You know, the thing that we've tried to do here as long as we've been doing these chamber forums is to remind folks that we intend this to be a forum in which we ask general questions. We don't try to point a question at one individual candidate, so this is not a debate. And, you know, so we would ask that you would address the questions that are posed to you as opposed to perhaps posing a question to another individual on the panel. We, again, I want to go over the time limits. You'll have the, you'll have the lights over here. I guess they're showing to you. They're not showing to me, but at the end of 10 seconds, I believe, 10 seconds, you will, you will see the yellow light, and you, and then at the red light, you'll hear a buzzer. What I ask, this is important because I really don't want to get into a situation where I have to cut a lot of folks off. That is not, it's awkward for me, and it's awkward for the audience who says, you know, I've heard people behind you before say, "What are you going to cut them off?" And well, you know, what I like to do is when you hear that buzzer, finish the sentence that you're based, that you're on. And it may be not a great place to stop, but I would ask that you, in fairness, end your, end your comment there. So that's all I got for this. Do you have any questions before we get started? All right. Well, we're going to start with our first question, and I'm going to address it to the at-large candidates, and then we'll move on to the other races.
What about our introductions?
We will, we're going to ask you to reintroduce yourself.
One minute.
And I will get to that in just a second, but we're going to ask you to introduce yourself. Provide us with that little, with a biographical snippet of introducing yourself, where you live, and maybe, you know, what you do for a living. That, we kind of keep it to that. But in your remarks, in the first question, please do that. And the first question was this. It is a two-part question that allows you to introduce yourself as candidates, and in addition to the biographical information, I'd like to know, and the audience would like to know, what do you feel are your most important qualifications for a seat on the City Council? And why did you decide to run? So let's see if you can work all that in one minute. And the first question, it goes to at-large, Andrew Davis.
Thank you, and hello, everybody. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you, Elliot, and the Chamber for putting this on. I'm relatively new to town. I'm delighted to get involved in civics. I have seven young children that are seven years old and younger. We had a set of twins, tour at Parkwood. My background is I was 32 years in the legal business in LA. I'm a recovering lawyer. Don't throw rocks at me. I escaped LA, and I escaped the law business, but I was a temporary judge. I was a plaintiff's personal injury lawyer. I'm retired now, living up in the Williams Farms area. And my philosophy of government, I'm extremely conservative on the fiscal issues. I'd like to see the city save as much money, and I'm concerned about the property tax. It's gone up somewhat, it looks to be, about 20%, and maybe the other council members can address it, but, and of course, public safety.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
And now we'll move to Randy Thomas.
Hi, I'm Randy Thomas. I am a native of Jacksonville. I've lived here most of my life. The son of Laverne and Randolph Thomas. Been married to my wife Kathy for 31 years. We have three children. I'm currently serving my third term on the Jacksonville City Council, and I'm proud of what we have been accomplished here in the past. The Center for Public Safety, the Jacksonville Landing, the Fire Station Number Two, especially proud of the 100 dilapidated buildings that have been demolished during our time. I think my history shows I am conservative. I vote against the tax increases that have increased here or occurred in the past, but I understand the need for services. And I think my experience, my knowledge of the area are the reasons I'm running.
Thank you. And now we'll move to Helen D. Heckey Thompson.
Hello. My name is Helen Thompson, Helen Dolores Thompson. I'm affectionately called Heckey by my family and friends. I reside at 133 King Street in the Belfort Homes area. I have lived here all of my life, and presently I am employed with the City of Jacksonville in the Human Resources Department. However, I've been employed in the city for over 30, over 31 and a half years. I'm a 1981 graduate of Jacksonville Senior High School, a 1985 graduate of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill with a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice and a minor in Psychology. And I have a Master's degree of Administration from Central Michigan University, where I attended at the Seymour Johnson's Air Force Site.
Okay, and then Robert, Bob Warden.
Thank you, sir. Hello, my name is Bob Warden, and I'm currently an incumbent on the Jacksonville City Council. I've had the privilege and the honor of serving the citizens of Jacksonville these past eight years, and I take that responsibility very seriously. And like Mr. Jackson down there, or excuse me, Mr. Davis, I'm also a fiscal conservative. I've served 15 years prior to the City Council on the Jacksonville Planning Board, and then prior to that, I served six years on the Water and Sewer Advisory Board. I think you can tell from my service that I love Jacksonville. This is my home. I'm a son of a retired Marine. I married a retired Marine's daughter, Lynn Bowman. We've been married almost 42 years, two kids. We've enjoyed living here, and my desire to run again is to continue to work with what I consider an outstanding city manager and city staff, and as well as an outstanding city council. Thank you.
And now we'll turn to the Ward One candidates. And first up for this, for this question, again, with a brief biographical information that I was asking for, and the questions would be, what do you feel are your most important qualifications for a seat on the City Council? And then the, and then why did you decide to run? And Brian Jackson, you're up first.
Hello, my name is Brian Jackson. I'm a native of Jacksonville, North Carolina. My mother is actually a former Avon Henderson, who's my family, her, my maternal family is from Jacksonville as well. She married a Marine, Charles Jackson. I went to Onslow County Public Schools, attended North Carolina Anti-State University, and have a degree, undergraduate degree in business for University of North Carolina at Wilmington. I actually also served with the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and I believe that was my greatest service, even greater than my service in the United States Navy, because I served service members, veterans, and their families. I currently am on the Onslow County Library Boards, Sandy Run, a missionary Baptist Church Apartments trustee board. And I decided to serve because I just thought it was time for me to come out and help my community. I have a heart to serve, and I need to engage my mind to actually, before I even engage, engage my heart before I engage my mind to serve. Thank you.
Jerome Willingham.
Good evening to everyone. I'm Jerome Willingham, and I'm employed by the United States Navy. I'm proud of that service, although I am a Marine. But the job I do is resolving disputes, and wherever the Navy sends me, that's where I go. And I thank my colleagues for indulging that service. Now's the opportunity, when we talk about the things that we've done and why we think we should remain in office, but I just have to add a caveat that, two things. One is that we can't do anything alone, by ourselves. It requires the support of our colleagues to get the vote that we need to get things done. I've built that kind of relationship. Secondly, even when you've done everything that you can do, sometimes things fall in your way and benefit you. I don't call it luck. I say, but for the grace of God, therefore I.
Thank you. And we'll move to Ward Two, Jerry Bittner.
Well, my wife told me that the reason I was running was to give me another excuse for getting out of the house. But really, I think it's in my DNA, being city manager for 12 years of the City of Jacksonville and serving on a city council since 2002. I'm interested in serving again because I enjoy working with so many volunteers and elected officials, people who give up their time and energy working for service clubs, nonprofit organizations, and there are a lot of them in this room tonight. Marsha Wright, Will, Bob Williams, Glenn Spradling. These are the kind of people that make this community go, and I enjoy the possibility of creating synergy by working with them.
Thank you. Okay, for the second question, we're going to go and reverse the order here roughly. So we'll start with you, Mr. Bittner. Do you believe the current council and city administrators are aligned with Jacksonville's taxpayers in terms of taxes and spending levels?
Yes, I think they are. We have a council that has been mentioned as fiscally conservative. We tried to be very progressive in terms of maintaining the standards of service that the people expect. Yes, someone mentioned we had to raise taxes, but that was based on the fact that the state legislature took away some revenues from us, and the county took away a sizable portion of sales tax revenue, putting us into a position where we had no choice other than to cut back on services. We did cut back on some positions where needed, where we could gain further efficiencies, economies, and effectiveness. And I think the council as a whole is very conscious of the needs of the people, and we're doing what we can in an era of diminished revenues because of slow growth.
Thank you. Mr. Willingham, I'm going to repeat that question again. Do you believe the current council and city administrators are aligned with Jacksonville's taxpayers in terms of taxes and spending levels?
Yes. I'm very comfortable with our tax rate and the policy and our history for, on occasion, when we felt that the citizens or residents had contributed too much, we lowered taxes. But unlike Congress, who can come in and say that we're going to just cut taxes by a certain percent, we have to have a balanced budget. And so that requires deliberation and collaboration on the needs of the city. And I'm just so proud that our city has decided that there are certain quality of life improvements that we need in the City of Jacksonville. And you can ride through the neighborhood of New River and see the improvements that we've made to Jack Amyette Recreation Center. You can ride through Georgetown and see the improvements that we made to Georgetown Park and adding a walkway where they don't have to walk on dead man's curb. So it's a balance of what you want for your city. What do you want your city to look like, and then have enough funds to support that.
Mr. Jackson.
Can you ask me one more time, please?
And I'll be glad to do that at any point in the program for anyone. Do you believe the current council and city administrators are aligned with Jacksonville's taxpayers in terms of taxes and spending level?
I think you can always be more creative when it comes to saving on taxes. You know, sometimes you could utilize private industry to help with, maybe you could even do with transportation in terms of naming, of advertising on the buses, so you can increase bus lines. I know we have an issue with transportation on the Belfort Road area. They do service Belfort Homes at this current time, but there are still complaints concerning transportation on the Belfort Road. So I think there's always ways to improve, and we just have to figure out those ways. You know, I think we, you want to keep taxes down, so you've just got to find more creative ways to service the people and what their needs are.
Thanks. And now we'll move to the at-large candidates, Mr. Warden.
The comment was made that we raised taxes 20%. That's not quite, quite accurate. On the face of it, it might appear so, but if you remember, that was at a time of revaluation. And so the residential property values went down. Therefore, in order to keep so-called revenue neutral, we would have had to actually raise tax, the tax rate, because we were doing it on a reduced amount, the base, the property tax. Something that, that most people don't realize is that all, almost all of the property tax that we collect here in Jacksonville goes to pay just for the, for the police and fire department. All of the rest of the services provided by the cities are obtained through other types of taxes other than property taxes. So we may have raised the taxes during the time of revaluation. That was the majority of the fact, trying to make it revenue neutral. But we'd also lost a couple million dollars in the sales tax redistribution from the county commissioners previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Do you believe the current council and city administrators are aligned with Jacksonville's taxpayers in terms of taxes and spending levels?
I do. Having been a recipient and an employee of the city for the last 30-something years, I, as a city staff member, have watched the budget and have had input into the budget. However, I do think that you can find enhancements, and as Mr. Jackson said, a couple of creative ways to listen to the needs of your citizens. No one likes to raise taxes. However, if we have to, to provide them the services that they want and need, then yes. But I do agree that they've done a great job, but everything stands, you know, room for improvement.
Thank you. Randy Thomas.
Well, thank you, Elliot. I would say in general, yes. Of course, there are always people that feel that there are too many taxes. Our most recent general fund budget was $47.1 million. I went back looking at the budgets since I came to council 10 years ago. The initial budget I was presented with in 2008, I think, was just north of $42 million. So that's a 1% per year increase in our general fund budget. Obviously, as Mr. Bittner mentioned, we have lost revenues during that time, and in order to maintain the level of service, we were forced to compensate or increase the taxes. But there are a lot of benefits to living in the City of Jacksonville. Our safety being one of them, and the other services. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrew Jackson Davis, I took away your middle name a while ago, and I didn't mean to do that, so I'm giving it by T and N.
No problem. That's fine. The short answer is I think there could be some improvement in the alignment of the revenues and the spending. I think revenues are a little high. I think taxes can be cut. I notice on the budget, it's online, 2013, 2014, 53.80, or 0.5380 per 100. Now we're up to, and this is on property tax, now we're up to 6420. That's a, that's about a 20% hit to the homeowner, and that can translate to $300 or $400 a year to the homeowner. And that's, that's significant after-tax money for an individual family that's paying their home. So I would like to go back to the 2013, 2014. There's probably some good reasons, but that would be my bias, to do everything we can to talk to the county, the state, to try to align that better.
Mr. Thompson.
I too would like to go back to the 2013 tax rate, as I would like to go back to the 2013 valuations that we had at that time. If you had a $200,000 house in 2013, in 2015, it was probably coming in at about 165. So we had a reduced tax base that needed, that we were required to generate the same revenue. So it's a multiplier effect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and any other rebuttals before we get going? I'd want to remind you that you do have those at your disposal. We're at question three now, so don't let the time run out without you taking full advantage of those. In terms of improving Jacksonville's quality of life, which means a lot of different things to different people, but what would you say would be your priorities? And we will start with the at-large candidates this time, and we will start with Randy Thomas.
Repeat the question?
Yeah. The question is basically this. In terms of improving Jacksonville's quality of life, whether it be a specific service, whether it be some maybe, you know, sports endeavor, whether it be, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but in terms of that, just to give you some examples of what we're talking about, or, you know, or source, the civic center that's been much discussed or something thereof. What would be your priorities?
I think the, the path that we are on now is a good path. We've done a lot through our Recreation and Parks Department to add facilities at a lower cost or at a sustainable cost. Without expanding the budget for the Recreation Department, we use the funds to augment what they already have. I think we enjoy a high quality of life and a high safety level. I think it's very important for our citizens. Safety is very important. Also, I think that in addition to the safety aspect, the city offers a special security for people in need. If you have an emergency in Jacksonville, you can call, and within three and a half minutes, if you're having a heart attack, there'll be someone there, policeman, fireman, et cetera. You don't have those kind of things out in the county. It could be a long wait for emergency services.
Andrew Jackson Davis, we'll move to you.
Just repeat the question real quick so I can pick up on it real quick.
In terms of improving Jacksonville's quality of life, what would be your priorities?
Public safety. First, foremost, end of story. Increasing the police department. I picked up the, the register of sex offenders. There's a guy down at McDonald's at Marine and Onslow. He's a homeless guy. I've got seven kids. That's a big concern. The police department's fabulous here, their presence, but we've got expenditures that could go to public safety, and that's the fundamental responsibility of this, this group, this, the city council. End of story. I'm not sure about the quality of life. I, I'm all for it, but I think that's a family issue, a private issue, and I'm not so sure it's the domain of the government. But what is, and what people expect are no violent crime or no tolerance for violent crime. When that woman walks from, through the parking lot at Walmart at night, she can be safe, and we can always improve that.
Thank you. And now we'll move to Helen Thompson.
Could you repeat the question?
In terms of improving Jacksonville's quality of life, what would be your priorities?
My priorities would be making sure all citizens are enjoying the quality of life, whether it be for the children, parks, recreations. We do have quite a number of events for the children, the new budget calls for splashpads, things for them to do to keep them out of troubled areas. I think as far as adults, we would, probably could improve the quality of life by having events that they could attend, and an event center of events that they could attend, and an event center of some type. The convention center has been mentioned, so perhaps we could work on the, getting a convention center, and as well as for the seniors, services for them. I would like to just see improvements all the way around for everyone.
Thank you. And, Mr. Warden?
Thanks, sir. I think that providing the necessary services is very important. I think the fact that we have a very well-qualified and professional police and fire department, just recently, we were the second safest city in North Carolina behind Cary in safety. We've got an excellent sanitation, parks and rec, water and sewer. Those essential services are our first priority. But what is quality of life? It's more than just making sure that your toilet flushes and that your garbage is picked up, but it also involves, what do you do on the weekend? What do you do in your spare time? We've invested quite a bit of money in our parks and recreation. We have festivals that we sponsor, that we participate in. We are involved in trying to make Jacksonville a more prosperous community. I think when people are more prosperous, I think then the money is more available for quality of life issues.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the Ward One candidate, and we'll start with Brian Jackson.
Can you give me a question one more time, sir?
In terms of approving, improving Jacksonville's quality of life, what would be your priorities?
I think our police force and our sheriff's department does a great job in the area. I also think that, you know, when it comes to water and sewer, we have a lot of great services. But one thing I've always heard as a service officer on the base, that a lot of the military that's actually on the process of getting out of the military, and young guys that I talk to, and young ladies, they always say there's not much to do. We have a lot of things to do, but I don't know if it's properly advertised. Also, I do believe that a convention center, or I've been hearing a multi-sports center which can offer the opportunity to have other live events there, would do a lot for the city. I think there's a great opportunity for fundraising for the city. It may cost up front, maybe you could get somebody privately to help support it, maybe have naming rights for it. But I think there's other possibilities if we do get these type of services for our city, and try to look at other things that, you know, and people tend to live in Jacksonville, but they reside in Jacksonville, but live other places.
Thank you. Mr. Willingham?
Thank you. Police and fire is not a quality of life issue. That's an essential services issue. And I sleep well at night knowing that Police Chief Mike Yanero is in charge of those services, and I appreciate his outreach, his community outreach, the One City, My City, One City, Your City, My City program is wonderful. My quality of life concern is downtown redevelopment. We've done a wonderful job with our residential housing, where you can have two people making minimum wage that can afford a brand-new home. But we have to expand on that and get the commercial part and the retail part of downtown. I've advanced some ideas to my colleagues, I've sent some ideas to the newspaper, they haven't been published yet, but I've worked with the committee that, of the county, Barbara Eichner was on that committee, and Commissioner Buchanan, they're going to appoint two new people, and we're going to work on connecting the downtown with the waterfront in front of the new courthouse, as well as the old Howard Johnson property, on something that we can be proud of.
And Ward Two, Jerry Bittner?
Sure. One of the ways we can help improve the quality of life is landing a industry, a business with well-paying jobs. I know Sheila Pierce spends her full time trying to beat the bushes with economic developers and hopefully attain one of these large employers at some time. But at times, improving the quality of life is eliminating problems, too. We're faced with an opiate crisis right now that fortunately we're working hand-in-hand with the county commissioners in developing a treatment facility, which should certainly help with that problem, and that problem is being faced by a lot of North Carolina municipalities. We also do other things in terms of recreation improvements. Trix will provide for meaningful events for family activities, participate in, we've helped improve the quality of life by improving upon a mass, public transportation system, and I could go on and on, but my time is up.
Thank you. Opportunity for rebuttal, and lacking none, I will move on to our next question, which is our, which we will address, starting with Helen Thompson and the at-large candidates. Both the state and local governments have important roles to play in highway and street improvements in the city. What is your top road improvement priority for Jacksonville?
My top road improvement would probably be the traffic signals and how, when we go Western Boulevard or down 24, that the lights are in sync. There was a time when it would take you, one day I left Bell Fork Road, and it took me about 26 minutes to get to the main gate early one morning. However, that situation has improved with the new traffic center up in Communications. That would allow cars, the traffic to flow so much better. I would continue to vote in favor of something of the program and fund the, fund the program that operates the traffic, lights and the traffic flow.
Thank you. And now we'll move to Randy Thomas.
You know, I heard this a lot when I first came on, was we need to do something about the roads in Jacksonville. Well, it turns out, a lot of the roads you see in Jacksonville are not the responsibility of Jacksonville, they're actually NC DOT roads. We've been very fortunate with our excellent transportation specialist, Anthony Prince, he's bringing a lot of state money to this area. We have on the books now 300 million worth of projects coming down the pikes in and around Jacksonville. So our priority, I say first prioritized, is to look at those residential streets that we are in charge of. Now, we've got, again, an excellent staff that have been through, analyzed all of the streets, and are working on a, basically what you'd call a grading system. So we're looking at, instead of letting some go to an F, we're trying to catch those Cs so we can do it for less money, so residential.
Mr. Warden?
It's not technically a city street, but my priority would be Gum Branch Road. If you go past the, basically where the elementary school and where the four lanes come to two lanes, that's a choke point for people both going to and coming from work. Quite a few of the folks who live in the Richlands area and further out work in Jacksonville or work on the base, and I think, I think that we need to do something about widening Gum Branch Road all the way to Richlands, and then tie that into the four lane there in Richlands. My other priority has always been to take care of the city roads that we are responsible for. Sometimes, some of the roads get in pretty rough shape until we can address them, but it's always a problem of having enough money to take care of all of our needs, so, and that will continue to be a problem. There will never be enough money to take care of all that we've got to do, so you have to be wise with both.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Davis?
Coming from LA, this is Nirvana in regard to traffic and streets, and you don't know how good you have it here. You're never further than 10 minutes from where you need to go. I would associate myself with the remarks of the councilman in regard to Gum Branch. That does seem to be problematic out there toward Richlands. It's a death trap, something has to be done. I pick up the paper, and there's bad accidents out there, and people do go 55 in that residential area, and there's not enough lanes, so maybe some state money could address that issue. And I go pick the kids up, I make a left turn there at Plantation on Gum Branch, and that's tough, too. But these are, this is all micromanagement, and I'm sure there's a terrific traffic officer here, because by and large, I have no complaints whatsoever. Thank you, guys. Really nice.
Okay, let's move to Ward Two, and Mr. Bittner.
Well, one of the, one of the-
Excuse me, go ahead.
One of the areas of congestion is the terminus of the Jacksonville Parkway. That's a high-priority item, and we're working with the state through our Transportation Advisory Commission, and our Transportation Director, Anthony Prince, and with the county members of the Transportation Advisory. We hope to see that bottleneck resolved within the next five years. The main concern of highway is bargaining with the state to get more money. Fortunately, we have a senator who's the Senate, leader of the Senate, Harry Brown, who's been instrumental in helping us get into the pipeline for more state money, and that's what it takes, because everyone has a claim on state money, and there's not enough to go around handling all the infrastructure needs. So we've got to be in there bargaining and get as much money as we can, too, for our local people.
Okay, now we'll move to Ward One candidates, Jerome Willingham.
Thank you. I would have to say thanks to the late Mr. Sewell for the bypass that we have that makes it so easy for you to get around in the city of Jacksonville. And I think that congratulations are in order to council and staff for our IT system that we have now for coordinating traffic. It is one of the state-of-the-art systems for coordinating traffits and coordinating traffic and dealing with any kind of emergency where the traffic flow has to be manipulated. But my focus has been and will continue to be on the crosswalks. We have done a wonderful job with crosswalks in the city of Jacksonville. One of the worst locations was Onslow Drive in 24, oh, 17, I'm sorry. And if you just look around, all of the major intersections pretty much have crosswalks. I remember feeling the sympathy for the Hatchell family when one of their members got struck crossing the streets, and we made a commitment to do that. I think we've done a very good job.
Mr. Jackson?
Give me the question one more time, sir?
Sure. In terms of, in terms of transportation, the question is, what are your top road improvement priorities for Jacksonville?
Well, I do agree that we have done a great job with the traffic light system. Also, I do agree that we have done a great job in the start of bringing crosswalks and trying to help out the pedestrian traffic, but I think we could still do more improvements. We probably need to look at Bell Fork and Harget Street, crossing over the Country Club Road. They do have a crosswalk in that area, but I think sometimes they're not really abiding by that, so we need to make that safer. Also, I do think we need to concentrate more on our neighborhoods. I know my neighborhood, Bell Fork Homes, definitely needs service on the roads, and I understand spending issues, but somehow you need to, we need to find out ways to service our different communities. As has been said, it is our responsibility of Jacksonville, the city of Jacksonville, to take care of those roads. I know we're advocates for the state roads and trying to provide a great, great, state roads for the area, but we need to take care of what we can take care of.
All right, candidates, we're about halfway through the questions. I wanted to, one thing I wanted to go back and do is remind people, a lot of people are still unclear how the city, the ward system works, and how the elections are, why aren't all the candidates here, or why aren't all the wards represented, for example. And in this year, this election year, we have the two at-large seats that are on the council. We have Ward One seat, and we have the Ward Two seat. In other words, we have four positions open this year for the, for that, those, for the council. Now, all city residents, all registered voters in the city will have an opportunity to vote for the at-large candidates. If you live in Ward One, you would vote, you would get a chance to vote for the at-large candidates, plus the candidates who are seeking a seat on Ward One, in Ward One. And the same thing that would work in Ward Two. You would get to vote for the candidates for Ward Two, as well as the two of the, two positions on the, in the at-large capacity. In the next election cycle for the city council, there will be Ward Three seat available and a Ward Four seat available, as well as the mayor's position, the mayor's seat. And so in every election, and the mayor's seat is elected at-large, just as these at-large positions are that we've been talking about tonight. So in every election, every city resident gets to vote, but whether or not you vote in a wards, but you will vote specifically for the candidates who are running in your ward. So maybe, I hope I haven't confused it any further, but in this case, we have two at-large seats and two ward seats that are going to be elected. Let's go back to a biographical question, and Mr. Jackson, we're going to start with you and the Ward One candidates over there. Let me ask you, which leadership role, outside of elected office in politics, has provided you with the most useful experience and the greatest rewards?
That's an easy one. Working as an advocate with the VFW for nine and a half years, and for American Veterans for one and a half years. With the VFW, I was allowed to work directly with veterans, their families, and service members, and you could see the direct results of how you influence and help families out with that, with that position. Also, as, working as a liaison for the National Guard Bureau with VFW, we were also helped to provide needs that the National Guard, they couldn't get, because a lot of times, when they came off of federal duty, when after deployment, they would go back to the states, and we would need to be able to provide for them in the separate areas that the different service members ended up back home, because unlike being on bases, a lot of times, they didn't have the resources, so we helped provide those resources.
Mr. Willingham?
Yeah, I would mention two leadership roles. As the officer in charge of legal services at Camp Kigger, I was very much in touch with the needs of our service members in times of deployment, or wills and powers of attorneys, and just trying to give legal assistance to them. But one of the most important roles that I played was as a coach in sports in Jacksonville. I used to coach baseball, basketball, and football, and just having the opportunity to work with the kids and understand their problems, and try to assist them with that journey into becoming teenagers and becoming more responsible. It was just a wonderful experience of working with the youth, and it's just something that I feel that I was created to do, and I wish I could do more of, but that opportunity to try to be a leader and show them and talk to them and help them with their problems.
And now we'll switch over to the at-large race, and Andrew Davis?
Well, it's kind of a gimme, because leadership, I'd have to say, just being the head of the household with the seven kids and my wife, that's a, I try to lead by example, and every day's a different experience, but that's extremely important to me, and I'm blessed to be in that position, to have that family and so on, kind of later in my life. In my non-family life, I did enjoy my experience as being a judge pro tempore in LA County, and people would come before me, and I made it a point, and I think I was successful in the feedback I got, and talking, and making every person that came there feel it was the most important thing, and spending time looking them in the eyes and talking about their case, and I hope they went away feeling good about that experience, and that might be something that was a leadership role for me as well.
Jerome Thompson?
I would probably say two. In 1985, after graduating from college, I came back home to work for the city's police department, which was the first 14 years of my career of the 31 and a half that I have done. I started out as a telecommunicator and held various positions down through the ranks, CSI, and eventually sergeant, corporal sergeant, and eventually, in over about a 10-year period, a little over 10 years, I was promoted to the rank of captain as the first African-American female to ever hold the rank, and I was able to touch and impact- And I was able to touch and impact the lives of many of our citizens, military and civilian, as well as being second role as a vice president in our community watch neighborhood during reunions and touching the lives of children.
Thank you. Randy Thomas?
Essentially, I can think of two roles I had prior to election that was a leadership position, basically. I was two years as president of the New River Rotary Club. That was a really easy job because we had a great group, a lot of support and a lot of good examples to follow up on. We did a lot of good things and made some good contributions to the neighborhood. Secondly, was my career as a retail business owner. As a sole proprietor, you have a lot of responsibility. You have all the decision-making. And so you're there to hire, fire, choose locations, choose product lines, and most importantly, lead by example, to demonstrate to our employees what good customer service requires. Thank you.
Okay, and Bob Warden?
Thank you. Several different things. One is working with youth. I've been a, was a longtime Boy Scout leader, coached all of the sports that I can think of, except perhaps soccer, softball, baseball, basketball. I enjoyed all of that. Also, being involved in the, in Kiwanis, in one of the civic groups here in North Carolina and actually internationally. I was president of our local club and was vice president, which was actually a district position for about fifteen clubs that I was responsible for. And then I'd say lastly, I've enjoyed immensely the church work that I've done through the years. I'm currently in the choir. In fact, tonight, when I leave here, I'm going to choir practice. The choir have taught Sunday School and also one of the leaders in worship, so thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Bittner, we're talking about leadership roles outside of politics and ...
Outside of politics? Well, I've been manager and leader of an organizations with over four hundred some employees with multimillion dollar budgets for forty-some years. I was elected president of the State Association of Managers in New Jersey and selected as manager of the year in that capacity. Been president of a local Rotary Club, various coaching positions with boys' baseball and girls' softball. One should not brag upon himself, so I quit.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add to the leadership roles. I have also served from 2008 to 2015 on the North Carolina Public Risk Managers Association as a board member, as well as a preacher steward at my church, which is like the right hand to the pastor, as well as the finances of the church, looking to the means of the finances and how we handle our money.
Okay, we'll move to our next question. And we will start this round of questioning with Ward One, Mr. Willingham. The question is this, should the council continue to require directors of city departments to live within the city limits? What is gained or lost by such a requirement?
I think the overall objective is for your senior staff, your directors, to have an investment in the city. And I think it demonstrates a good example if they buy into the city. I was so proud when our new city manager at the time, he's been about eight years, but not Richard Woodruff, purchased a house downtown. We were in the midst of downtown redevelopment. I thought it set a wonderful example. But I think there are limits to that. I don't, I think that if an employee has been here for a substantial period of time and earned and worked up to the higher ranks, that some difference should be provided to that employee so they don't have to uproot their family and move into the city limits. So I think there should be an exception to the director and I hope that we'll work on that to try to get something that's reasonable.
Mr. Jackson?
I agree with Mr. Willingham on, if you do have persons that's already invested time on the staff here, I think they should be able to continue to help make Jacksonville a better place because they have already worked and dedicated themselves to that. Also, I do realize sometimes in issues when you deal with veterans and their families, sometimes you cannot have, keep them enclosed in areas. So we have to take some consideration when it comes to not being able to bring in talent because of those different issues. I think it's something that we need to, you know, look all around holistically to make a decision on that and just don't make a blanket decision. I understand being able to invest more because you're in the city, but in some cases, you have talent, but they can't actually be in the city for other reasons.
Okay, thank you. And as we move over to the at-large candidates for this question, I'm going to try to repeat it here. And the question is this, should the council continue to require directors of city departments to live within the city limits? What is gained or lost, potentially lost by such a requirement? And we will move to at-large and Mr. Davis.
It's a good question. I'm not sure it's the most important question that we have to decide, but I'm sure good arguments could be made on both sides of that. The taxpayers deserve the best candidates and the best directors, year after year. Requiring them to live within the city may exclude outstanding candidates and directors. So that would be a concern I would have in regard to protecting the taxpayer. But I certainly understand the spirit and intent of what the council's doing and making a statement on behalf of the city. So I'd have to think about that. I never really gave that much thought. It's interesting.
Randy Thomas?
Thank you, Elliot. You know, this is something that has been probably in play for ten or twelve years now, this policy of directors living within the city limits. And during that time, I don't think there's ever been a point where they all did actually live inside the city limits. Some were grandfathered in when the policy came in. That was the original situation. But as a general rule, I feel like if someone is employed with the city, it's good that they live under the rules that they are instituting and enforcing. On the other hand, I can't see punishing someone for already working here and perhaps living out of town. And if they've worked here for, like I said, an extended period, have gained the trust and they're the best candidate, an exception should be made. But if you're going to move from South Carolina, you might as well go ahead and make the move into the city.
Thank you. And we'll move to Ms. Thompson.
I have been an employee for a number of years. I did owe Councilman Thomas's remark in that we've had some very qualified candidates for, and department directors who have lived outside of, out of the city limits and then was promoted into department director positions and had to, you know, necessarily, it would have been not so much as an inconvenience to move, but they had gained that trust. I think when that came about, it was many years ago when you were in police and fire and there were emergency situations that you would have to respond to city situations within like a thirty-minute, you had a thirty-minute response time. So I agree with him. Yes, they need to share in what they're, they're working towards, but at the same time, I don't think they should have to after several years of employment.
And Mr. Warden?
I think it's a good policy to require newcomers to the city that are being, taken, that are taking a position at the department level. I think they need to live within the city limits. I think that there are occasions where you would make an exception and the only one that I can really think of a good reason for an exception would be if we had a longtime employee that had moved up through the ranks and was well-deserving of the promotion. And in fact, when we advertised for that position, she was by far the best qualified candidate. She happened to live in her family farm up in the Mayville area. And so we made an exception in this case because she was by far the best qualified candidate. But I think it's a wise policy to have those people who are running the city and who are, who need to be responsive to the citizens, I think it's wise to have them live within the city limits.
And finally, Ward Two, Mr. Bittner?
Generally, I agree with the sentiments expressed by Bob and others that as a general role, I think if you are in a leadership position in the city government, you should work, you should live in the city. You make decisions that affect the lives of people who are living here, so you should be part of that community. There always will be exceptions and you shouldn't shortchange the organization by hiring someone with lesser abilities than if you went outside the community to seek a person for your position.
Thank you. Okay, this time we'll start the questioning with our at-large candidates. And the question is, what strategies and improvements could revive the prospects of the core of the city downtown Jacksonville? And we will ask Mr. Warden first.
I would say that the policies that we've implemented, the programs that we've started, I think are bearing fruit today. I don't know off the top of my head of a new initiative that we need to pursue, but I think it's always wise to be, to consider new ideas. As y'all know, we've done a great job. Randy mentioned that we've torn down over a hundred properties, houses, dilapidated buildings around town, majority of which were downtown. We've got a nice park downtown. I think the next, to me, the next area that we need to work on downtown is getting in some businesses of some sort. We need to have some restaurants. I think it's, if we want people to live down that way, it'd be nice to encourage them to get out, walk around and perhaps do a little bit of shopping, at very least, eat in the restaurants. It'd be nice if we could have something along the waterfront.
Ms. Thompson?
Could you repeat the question?
What are the, what strategies and improvements could revive the prospects of downtown Jacksonville?
I would say that you would continue your, like Mr. Warden said, your policies, but also incorporate new partnerships with like your home builders and developers who would come in and develop new businesses along the waterways in conjunction with the new marina that we're starting to build. Keep your enhancements on the Willingham Parkway. Add to those things that can be added to. And that's pretty much.
Randy Thomas?
As I see it, the dilemma about downtown is you've got reduced traffic. Well, you've got several challenges. You've got parking as a challenge all over downtown. But it's just, it's just not busy as it is. So as a merchant, if you're looking at the same startup costs at 844 Court Street as you are at 1244 Western Boulevard, you're going to go to Western. I mean, you've got to go where the, makes the most sense. Somehow, I think we need to find a way to reduce the cost of going into business downtown Jacksonville. I don't know how other cities do it, but I know things occur in Kinston that I've seen happen that I don't think could ever happen here. What it would take, I'm not exactly sure, but at least recognize the fact that if a business is going to take the risk, there's got to be some offset to the reduced traffic.
Andrew Davis?
Yeah, I kind of take a different position. And I'm sorry to throw cold water on it, but I'm not sure it's the council's jurisdiction or interest to play favoritism and say, okay, we're going to put more money into, quote, downtown. Today's downtown is tomorrow's open fields and maybe we've moved with progress to Western or Marine or down in that area. And so I'm very concerned about taxpayer money being, just because it's downtown, funneled into that area where perhaps the taxpayers don't necessarily want to go. The streets are old, blah, blah, blah. So again, it's probably boring, but laissez-faire, meaning the government should be small and not get involved in these macro decisions about growth. Let the free sector, the private sector determine that and let's not spend taxpayer money in that regard.
Thank you. And we'll move over to Ward One candidates. Brian Jackson, I'm going to repeat the question here, which is, what strategies and improvements could revive the prospects of downtown Jacksonville?
I think just being advocates for the city and actually trying to encourage people to bring business down there, I kind of believe in, if you bring the right things, they will come. And with the waterfront area there and the marinas and just bringing other activities in there, I think we can encourage traffic down there. If, and there is an issue with parking. I don't know if you create a parking deck and possibly maybe start encouraging some kind of shuttle, or I've seen carriage rides. Maybe we can get to that. I've gone to other cities, even smaller cities in Jacksonville, and they actually have a better identity. I would like to see Jacksonville recreate itself and actually create a thriving downtown area. I also would like to see New River come back up again. You know, we got food deserts in certain areas, so I would like to see some other things brought to certain areas that is good for those communities.
Okay, Mr. Willingham?
Your first impression often can be your lasting impression and your downtown often gives that first impression. As far as favoritism, we're in the business of determining who gets what and how much. That's what politics and government is all about. We made a conscious decision to shut down downtown Jacksonville because we didn't like the bars and the nightlife. We made that decision. And so we're responsible for Western Boulevard, the city council is. So in the same way, we can be responsible for revitalizing downtown Jacksonville. What I propose is that from the Train Depot to Old Bridge Street, that we close those streets, make them a pedestrian mall. Please Google Lincoln Road in South Beach, Florida. I'm not talking about South Beach, I'm talking about scale. We can do those things. We can have alfresco dining. You can go to Asheville, North Carolina, they have alfresco dining, outdoor dining. We can, if you look and see what we do to medians, just think of what we can do to that street to make it beautifully landscaped and allow the businesses to have outdoor dining. It could be wonderful downtown.
Thank you. Bittner, Ward Two?
Twenty years ago, you probably wouldn't want to go down Court Street. But with wise government investment and improvement of the area, the tax base actually has grown and it's going to continue to grow if we manage it correctly. We need additional parking. We need to attract, we're not going to compete with Western Boulevard, but we need to attract some specialty type shops, boutiques and so forth. And it can be, it can be a nice little excursion away from the hustle and bustle of Western Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. We have one rebuttal card from Mr. Warden.
We're not in the business of playing favorites. We want to see all parts of the city be prosperous. One of our goals is to make sure that we remain a vibrant and alive city. And if we allow one neighborhood to go down, then we've caused issues throughout the, throughout the whole city. We not, we don't want to do that. We've spent a lot of time and attention on downtown. We're now putting that same focus on the New River area. So we're aware of some issues around town.
Okay, and Mr. Willingham?
Every time we go to a city government conference, the discussion's about walkability. How do we make our neighborhoods more complete and walkable? That downtown area has been remarkable with its revitalization as a result of our private and public partnership with builders to build those homes where we have, we don't have a gentrification issue. We didn't have people moving out and being displaced. We have wealthy and we have affordable. And with respect to the affordability... And with respect to the affordability, yeah, the startup cost might be the same, but the cost of property is nothing near what it costs on Western Boulevard. So, I encourage that.
Thanks, and Mr. Davis.
Just real quick, I'd like to take those millions of dollars that the council is using to play favoritism and redo downtown and put that money right into law enforcement. That's a big reason people don't want to go downtown, is because they don't feel safe. So, it's important that we put that money into what is the real function of this council, and that is public safety. It sounds simple, but that's, that's the bottom line, our job.
Okay. Any other rebuttals? You've got one more question, I think we got coming up.
Just one real quick. The people in the Court Street area and so on, the business owners and the residents, they're entitled to the utmost in public safety too, and it's the utilization of tax dollars. We cleaned that area up. We made it safer for the residents and we developed a business atmosphere. It is a wise government investment of public funds.
Thank you. Moving on to our final question of the evening, then we're going to move down to summations. It may be a related question, but in your opinion, has the city turned a corner in terms of appearance? What more can be done to make Jacksonville more appealing for residents and visitors alike? And we will start this questioning with at-large candidates and Andrew Jackson-Davis.
City looks great. I'm so impressed with how the city looks and especially, and this goes to the character of the residents, how clean it is. You hardly ever see trash. I'm so impressed with that, that. And I guess that would be my response. Would you like to cue me in a little bit more about it? What was it again? I'll leave it at that.
The aesthetics, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And...
I know what I wanted to say, it just came to me, and I'll just take 10 seconds. A private arrangement or partnership to put trees in, tree scape, but a private partnership, not one penny from the city budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Well, absolutely, we've turned the corner on the appearance of the city. I mean, they, when the manager came to town, he instituted what was called a Clean and Green campaign. And that's one thing I've always felt about Jacksonville is, you know, instead of fancy buildings or big time parks, Jacksonville has beauty that just needs to be revealed. So, like you said, if you get the trash out, that's a benefit for everyone. I remember again, when he first arrived, he asked the assistant city manager, he said, "How, how often do we sweep the streets here right down the street?" And they said, "Well, never. That's a DOT street." He said, "Well, that's ridiculous." That's a street right here in Jacksonville, so that's been kept up. Our sanitation does a fantastic job. I think we've got a really good-looking town and more to come.
Ellen Thompson.
Yes, we have. Having been a lifelong resident, not that we had a messy city, but our entryways are much nicer with the new foliage and the greenery that we have. The Clean and Green Initiative has helped out with that, and it has been revived. And I really want to give credit to the staff, the Streets Department, who sweeps the young men in parks and recreation, who do all of the planning, the shrubbery. They're constantly out there all the time. The sanitation department that comes and makes sure that all your large bulk items are picked up. And even a plug for the manager, I've seen him out on Saturday mornings in different places picking up trash and working in areas, and I had never seen that before.
Absolutely, absolutely, we've turned the corner. Those of you sitting in the audience and watching know how much a nicer and prettier place that we have since we've made an effort to make sure that buildings, dilapidated buildings are torn down, the streets are swept, we planted a lot more trees, we've put emphasis on the gateways, on the major roads into the city. Look at the Memorial Gardens over here that we've supported and have helped fund. Look also at the New River. Look how clean the New River is today. How many times I went down to one of my buddy's house on the river and the wind was blowing the wrong way from the sewage treatment plant, it was not a very attractive place to be, regardless of the view. And look at all of the recreational boaters that are now taking advantage of such a cleaner, cleaner New River. And the city has taken the initiative on that, and we continue to look for ways to make this a nicer place to live.
Okay. We will, and now we will move to Ward Two, Mr. Bittner.
The appearance of the city speaks for itself in terms of what people think about it, and I think we've put our best face forward in terms of all the improvements we've made on Jacksonville Parkway, West Huff, Riverfront Park, many other areas that just speak so well of the city and make such a good impression upon people visiting here and hopefully some people who are looking for a good spot to put a business in, they can look at those improvements and say, "We'd like to locate here."
Mr. Willingham. Ward One.
If I were limited to just two words, I'd say Jacksonville Landing. Everybody remembers the blight that you saw when you approached the city of Jacksonville, how beautiful it looks right now. That is partly responsible because of the Clean and Green Campaign that Dr. Richard Woodruff brought to the city of Jacksonville. I'd also like to add, y'all know what I had to say about "I," but I thank the council for supporting the initiative to have a culturalist on staff. We've had two now, and it's made a wonderful difference when you have somebody who knows how to design and landscape to that extent. Memorial Gardens, Mr. Bittner mentioned Memorial Gardens, I cannot say enough about Memorial Gardens and what we were able to accomplish there. Even when there was an issue of the bike path going through there, I think we worked through that wonderfully. I know Congressman Walter Jones was involved in that, but I think we worked through that wonderfully, and it is a beautiful attraction, and I travel and I see all kinds of monuments, including Washington DC. Memorial Gardens is first class.
Mr. Jackson.
Can you repeat the question one more time for me, sir?
Yes. In, why has the city turned the corner in terms of appearance? What more can be done to make Jacksonville more appealing for residents and visitors alike?
Well, I agree. Jacksonville has done, and the council and the staff has done a great job in some of the improvements of Jacksonville. Like you said, tore down a lot of the buildings, a lot of blight, especially in the downtown area. But what I would like to see is, because when you go past, you go down Hargett Street, and you pass some of the homes or the apartments on Hargett Street, you could see, like one in particular that sticks out to me, it looked like a tree fell down on it. So, we might need to do more code enforcement or try to figure out how we can come in, maybe, maybe we could partner with other organizations to come in and actually fix those type of issues in those areas like New River. As mentioned, Dr. Woodruff has been instrumental in actually going out and picking up trash. I actually was in a ditch with him in the Myrtlewood area cleaning up one Saturday. So, I know there's other ways for us as a community to come together and make things happen.
Mr. Warden has indicated a rebuttal.
Just, just an extra comment. We've, we've had all these new, new roads put in town, and you'll notice that we were able to address some of the landscaping along the Highway 17 portion of the bypass area. You're going to see, and also over on the Huff Drive portion between Bell Fork and Western, you're going to see some more coming in the near future. We've, we've worked with the state DOT and obtained funding through some of their processes. We've got some more plantings coming up very soon.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add a few things to what I said earlier. I've had the opportunity to observe with the fire department where when we had residences that the community development department could not, you know, there was no rehab in form. They have worked diligently with the fire department to do live burns and get those leveled down, and the streets department would come in the next day and you never knew it was there. Also, for the citizens who have done the Adopta Highway, that's also helped clean up the city.
And Mr. Thomas, did you have something?
Freedom fountain.
Okay. All right. We're going to move quickly into the summations, try to wrap this up, and we're going to start with Ward Two, Jerry Bittner.
Summations?
Summations.
Well, I'm running because I enjoy city government and I enjoy the progress we've made, and I particularly am thrilled with the idea that this council has worked so well together over the past years and has established new working relationships with the county commissioners. I think we live by the motto of the three Es, efficiency, effectiveness and economies, and been able to minimize tax increases and yet maintain a high quality of services. And I'd certainly like to continue to be part of that effort.
Thank you, sir. And move to the at-large candidates, and we're going to start with Bob Warden.
Thanks, sir. Since I've had the honor and privilege of being on council, I have a body of work. I voted on all of the important issues, all the issues that have come before me in the last eight years. And I guess, you need to ask yourself, has Bob Warden done a good job representing me? I've always tried to look out for the taxpayer. I've always, being a businessperson, I know where the money comes from. It comes from the pockets of our individual citizens, and I'm well aware that we need to do a good job of spending our money wisely. Sometimes that means investing our money, investing in downtown projects or investing in new parks, things that add to the quality of life. We need to continue to invest in Jacksonville. And my question to you is, if you think I've done a good job, I would like four more years of serving you and doing my best. And if, the council, I think, has done a great job. Our diversity is our strength, so, thank you.
Ellen Thompson. I feel that I'm qualified to run for this particular office for my life experience, especially the work history that I've had in local government over the last 32 years, that I've touched the lives of many citizens in law enforcement. Also, I've touched the lives of employees, direct contact with employees and really know their needs. I've seen a lot, experienced a lot, and have been on both sides of the coin in many situations. I am fair, firm and impartial, and just based on my work history, I've been a public servant my entire career. So, I would like to represent all citizens, and I would be a strong advocate for the one city, our city, my city campaign, simply because I think everyone needs to have a voice and they need to be represented, whether it be the youth, the middle age, the offender, the homeless, unemployed. Everybody needs an opportunity to be a part of the city.
Thank you. And continuing with the at-large candidates, Randy Thomas.
In closing, I just want to say, I feel really lucky. You know, lucky to live in such a great place as Jacksonville in Onslow County, lucky to have friends and family that support me, lucky to be in good health and have the ability to get up and go to work at a job that I truly enjoy for customers that I truly appreciate, lucky to be part of a city council that's accomplished numerous good things for the people of Jacksonville and Onslow County, lucky to work with a city manager and staff who know that our municipal government is a business and it exists to provide services to our citizens. So, I am asking you to allow me to continue to serve you as a city councilman at large for Jacksonville, North Carolina. Thank you.
And Mr. Davis.
Yes, I would like you to consider me. I'd like your vote. I'm a guy that certainly puts, my whole being is putting the taxpayer first, and for those funds we do get, it's all about law enforcement. I went through the budget, it's all online, $350,000 for a digital sign, Western and Gateway North. The property tax is up 20% from the 2013-2014 budget. I'd like to cut that 20% and give the average homeowner about a $300 or $400 rebate, in essence, after tax dollars. Media services, $656,000. Mayor and council, $478,000. My question is, can we move that money back to the reserve fund or put it into law enforcement or plain and simple, lower the budget and support the taxpayer? So, that's my bias, and I'd like you to consider that. That's why I'm running.
Okay, we'll move to the Ward One candidates for summations. Brian Jackson.
Yes, the shortest poem on record is "Me, We." It was written by Muhammad Ali. And as a poet myself, I think about the idea of me being a part of a greater whole. I think that as a community, we have to learn to work and operate better together. That takes conversation, that takes communication. I think we have a lot of great nonprofits from our reentry programs to some of the programs that help the youth, but I think somehow we got to improve the communication within that. My name is Brian Jackson. Jacksonville is in me, and I'm glad to be back in Jacksonville. I hope to be the Ward One candidate that can win, and even if we get more participation, I'll feel like I've won, even if I don't sit in the seat. But I want to be your choice and your voice.
And Mr. Willingham.
Thank you. Thanks to the chamber and the panel for this wonderful evening and opportunity. I really didn't prepare for any of this, and it's not that I'm arrogant. I realize that this race is up for grabs, and Mr. Jackson could very well win this race, but I was just so curious as to what the issues were. What's the separation? What did I not do? What could have done better? And I just wanted to hear that, and I think the community needed to hear that tonight. What is the difference between the candidates? We've gone through national elections, we've gone through even, and you see the bad incident that happened when the Republicans were trying to play a baseball game, all over politics and hostilities. And even at the local level, there are people that still don't speak to each other because elections that are in the past. And so, there needs to be something for the people to say this versus that. And so, one of the things that I'm doing to address that is I've invited all the candidates in all the community, including Mr. Jackson, to Court Street Recreation Center on Sunday the 8th, and we're going to have a cookout, and we're just going to enjoy and celebrate Ward One.
Thank you very much. And I want to, I want to say, in conclusion, that I thank all the candidates for following these time limitations that we have. We were able to get to the program. I would like to thank Lisa Muravito from the chamber staff for doing a great job at the time. I did see any slip up, so it's awesome. And I thank the audience for being patient and listening and being a, just, I hope they are informed after this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Lorette.
And thank you to our candidates for your willingness to serve, and I wish you all the best of luck in the election. I also want to say thank you again to our sponsor, Duke Energy, our media sponsor, The Daily News, and our partners, the city of Jacksonville and the city of Jacksonville Media Services. If anyone missed any part of the forum, just check the listings for G10 for the rebroadcast time and dates. And most importantly, remember, your vote does count. Early one-stop voting will start October 19th. It will go from November 4th. It will be held at the Jacksonville Commons, and Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you for joining us for the chamber's forum.